I agree, can start. Evelyn, yeah, roll call please.
Trustee Lee.
Eric.
Trustee King is absent. Trustee Marcus?
Yeah.
Vice President Weekly is absent. President Wells?
Here. All right, good evening. Welcome to the today's June 25th, 2025, meeting of the Redwood City School District Governing Board. Buenos Notas. Se raka ere interpretacion al español. Por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de numero. Si asiste a la reunión en persona, solicita un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. All right, welcome to our last school board meeting of the 2425 school year. As we close out the year, I just want to express my gratitude to the students, all our staff, and all the families and other supporting adults. You know, the partnership that that all comes together to ensure the success of students is really, really invaluable. And really thank you everyone for being partners in education. And with that, the board encourages you and all members of the public to participate and provide comments on issues of concern, regardless of whether they're on the agenda. So if you're attending via Zoom, please complete a speaker's card online or raise your Zoom hand when the agenda item of interest comes up. And if you're here in person, you'll find speakers cards at the entrance. At the entrance, I don't think anyone's here in person, so we can go from there. And of course, if you're addressing a subject on the agenda, we'll call you at the time that that agenda item is being considered. And if it's not on the agenda, we'll call you shortly during oral communication. And then, of course, we do limit public comment to three minutes per person. We apply that regardless of the topic, so just to be fair to all speakers. All right, let's move on to changes to the agenda. I'm going to recommend two that I didn't catch earlier, but I think 10.6 and 10.7, after reviewing the packet, seem pretty perfunctory. And I thought we could move them to consent. Unless someone has something that they need to discuss about them. Those are the agreement for training for credential candidates. And 10.7 is the approval of the personnel report. All right, great. Then can we get an approval of the agenda? I need a motion. And there's two of you, so you get to do it all night.
Sure. I will make a motion to make 10.6 and seven to put them out on consent, and I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor. Great. Agenda's approved, and we're going to go on to oral communication. I saw no speakers cards online. I see no hands on Zoom. And Evelyn has received no cards. Great. Then we're going to move on to our first agenda item, which is, oh, bond program consent items. Can I get a motion to approve the two consent items?
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor. Great. Now we're on to the action items. This is 7.1, approval of the HVAC upgrade projects, phase two for Kennedy Middle School, Orion Alternative School, and Clifford School. Rick?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. John's side is Nick Olson from VPCS, our bond program manager, and Martin Cervantes to give a brief overview of the HVAC upgrade projects and the school sites proposed for phase two. So with that, I'll hand it over.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, members of the board and staff. So we come tonight because we're excited that phase one of the HVAC projects have started for the summer. They're going well. And now that the board has approved the facilities master plan, thank you. We would love to start design on next summer's HVAC projects, phase two, that'll be anticipated for construction in summer 2026. So the schools that we're proposing tonight moving forward with design are Kennedy, Clifford, and Orion. The reason that we are proposing these schools is based on the master plan. In the master plan, these schools are primarily scheduled for modernization. So if we upgrade the HVAC, we could still reuse those in any modernization if they were chosen as part of the implementation plan and the project prioritization. So again, the schools we're recommending moving forward with tonight are Kennedy, Orion, and Clifford. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So anyone have questions, comments? Oh, okay. I'll just say, you know, thank you for moving forward and, you know, the intentional planning of ensuring that this aligns with the facilities master plan. You know, we've talked about this before. HVAC systems aren't just comfort. It's really about having a, you know, a learning and working environment that is tolerable and actually safe and supportive like we want to have as part of our mission. So I think we should make a motion to approve this and move on. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve phase two of the HVAC upgrade project.
All in favor. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we're on to discussion items. 8.1, and this is a discussion on the local indicator measurement for the California school dashboard.
Yana, would you be presenting, or do I share?
Hi Jenny, I'm trying to share my screen and find it, but it's not coming up for me. Let's see, no. If you can share, you have it on, you can share.
Jenny? Yes. Does everybody see the screen?
Yep, we do.
Okay, so good evening, board members. So tonight, we're here to present the local indicator section of the California school dashboard. This back, this part of the dashboard highlight the district local effort, like beyond the state task core that we see from CAS and ALPAC to support our student, staff, and families. So this is how the school dashboard look like, and it's available publicly. School dashboard will be published every year in the fall. This year will be published early in November, on November 15, that expected day. So with the California school dashboard, overall, the parent educator and stakeholders can use a dashboard to view how the district and the school is doing under the California accountability system. Under our California school system, there are 11 indicators to measure a school and district performance. Six of them are the state indicators, which we've seen through the previous year dashboard that are related to academic suspension, ELD learner, chronic absence, and other measures if you are a high school district that has to do with graduation rate. Today, we focus on the five local indicators that measure how the district is doing in terms of providing the student support and paying parent engagement, implementing academic standards, school climate, and whether the school and the district is providing broad course of access to the courses for the student. So each of the local indicators are rated as met, not met, or net met for two years, based on whether the district has appropriate process and measure in place. This report must be presented as a non-consent item at the same public meeting with the LCAP when it is adopted. So today's presentation will fulfill this requirement by summary, summarizing our district performance on each of the local indicator. The first state priority measure whether the school has sufficient instructional material and safe and clean functional facility for the student. The local tool that we use is the WILAM audit that we have every year as our site. And the result for this year is that all of our students have access to their own copies of standard line instruction material to use at school and at home. Also, all the district facility met the good repair standard to ensure the safe and well-maintaining learning environment. The state priority two, look at the district progress in implementing academic standard across all the subjects, including professional development and instructional material. So the local tool we use is a survey that's sent out to all the credential staff at the district. We have 67 participants in the survey. I also include a link here in case any board member in interest is interested in how the the score was broken down for each of the answers, or whether they want to see how the questions is placed on the survey. So the priority two, we report the result using five-point scale, and these scales are established by the state. It's go from one to five, exploration and research, beginning development, initial implementation, full implementation, and then the last one is full implementation and sustainability. There are five area measure under priority two. The first area focused on the staff perception on the district progress in providing development, professional development on each of the academic standard, EOA, EOD, math, next generation science, and history, social science. For most of the standards, the district is at the initial implementation stage with an average score of three. The exception is the history, social science, where additional work is still needed. The next area measure the district progress in ensuring that the standard line instructional materials are available in all the classroom where the subject is taught. So in according to our staff, we are in full implementation of all the standard, except for history, social science, which is a step behind and at the initial implementation. This area measure staff perception on how well the school district is supporting the staff in recognizing and improving their instructional practice aligned to the new academic standard through policies and program. So overall, we are an average at three, initial implementation, with again, exception in history, social science, is at beginning development. Because we are primarily an elementary school district, this measure, it is suspected that our staff are perceiving that some standards such as CT and visual performing art, we are only at the beginning development stage. And then the last area that priority two measure is how well our district is doing in identify professional development need and support the school site and administrator. The feedback from our staff indicate that the district need to pay more attention to identify the specific PD need of individual teachers. The next state priority is priority three. This one measure the district progress in engaging the family and developing a family engagement policy, programs, practice, and partnership with the local families. For this year, we start to use the California Healthy Kids Survey to survey our families. The survey is available in both English and Spanish. Our priority three measure three key practice in family engagement. The first one is building relationship between school staff and family. The parent feedback is collected using the scale go from strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, and then don't know. The survey result shows that 94% of our parents agree that school staff treat them with respect, and 85% believe that the staff take their concerns seriously. Hold on, I might, I think I might be blocking the share screen a little bit. And then additional result also show that over 80% of our parents agree that our school does seek support, does seek the parent input, welcome the parent contribution, and actively engage in communication with families. The second family engagement practice is building partnership for student outcome. The survey results show that over 70% of our parents agree that the school have the capacity to provide different level of support based on student need, and also offer a resource to help families support student learning and development at home. Additional survey results also show that 80% of our parents believe that school are making progress in meeting families and discuss the, discuss with them about a student progress and outcome. The third, and the final area that the prior, pre-three focus on is seeking input for decision-making. Of the parents who took the survey, 56% of them participate in a parent-teacher organization at the site. And 74%, I'm sorry, 76% agree that the school does seek the input before making important decision. And then the next state priority, state priority is priority six on school climate. This priority measure how students feel about school safety and whether they perceive a positive learning environment through engagement and support. This year, we also use the California Healthy Kids Survey for grade four through eight. This priority aligns with our LCAP goal one and was reported during last, last week's public hearing of LCAP progress. Today's presentation would just give you a little bit more detail on the breakdown of the survey result. In the school engagement and support area, the survey measure the student academic motivation using different question set for grade four through fifth, and then grade six through eight. I've include here the sample survey question that contribute to this measurement. In general, our elementary student report higher academic motivation compared to middle school student. School engagement and support also measure student to adult relationship. The data showing that student, as the student advance in the grade level, they tend to feel less connected to adult at school. The last measure in school engagement and support is school connectedness, where consistent with the previous result, elementary student also report feeling more connected to the school overall compared to their middle school student. The next area of school climate survey measures school safety with only one question, do you feel safe at school? Or how safe do you feel at school? And the results saw that elementary students tend to feel more safe compared to middle school students. Another area measure under the school safety is also cyberbullying. On average, 25% of our students in grade four through eight reporting experience such as some incidents such as rumors or hurtful comment via social media or cellphone. The preferred outcome for this measure is expected to have a lower percentage of students saying yes, they have experienced cyberbullying in the past 12 months. And the last local priority is priority seven. This probably report on the district effort to provide a broad course of study that goes beyond the core subject like math, English, science, or social science. It's also include other subjects such as art, foreign language, nutrition, and like our visual performing art, this to ensure that students receive a well-rounded education. For this indicator, we use Power School, our student information system, as our primary tool to review student schedule, attendance, and engagement form. So this slide here just show you the courses that are offered. For grade one through six, beyond the core classes, we also offer visual performing arts and health. For grade seven through eight, we also offer foreign language and visual and performing arts. And that is the end of the local indicator presentation for today.
Thank you, Jenny, for the presentation. If no one else has anything to add, then I'll turn to the trustees and see if you have questions or comments about the local indicators.
Question regarding the priority two, is it based on teachers? I can't think of the word, just went blank. Yes. They, when they talk about like social science or history being like a two or a three versus a three or a four, is that really true? I mean...
It's professional development, which we haven't focused on, and professional in terms of history and social studies.
Because we're basically more like English and math. Okay, that's what it was. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for these slides, Jenny. I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that I understand kind of the framing of what is being displayed in this. So correct me if I'm wrong. I think there's, as I understand, there's kind of two pieces to this. One of them is purely through the California State Dashboard and whether or not we have met that. And I think that's kind of the, the top line of each of these slides. It says met or not met, and that doesn't say anything about the results. All that says is that we have processes in place to start measuring them, and that's all the California dashboard is going to do.
Yes, that's correct. So there is actually a window where it opened in June and closed in August that we have to report all these results to the dashboard. We don't determine whether it's met or not met, but the dashboard, the CD will collect information, review, and say met. So according to my knowledge, as long as we have report out that there's, there has been progress in place to measure these indicators, then they will assign a met status to us on the dashboard, and we'll see it in the fall when they publish it.
Got it. So from the state's perspective for the cash, the dashboard, they're not looking really at the results per se. They're looking at the process piece of it.
Right. For example, if you have, last year, you have, you had the five, right? And this year, for some reason, you're at a one. They're not going to even look at it. Don't, they're not even wondering what happened. Why didn't you progress? Why didn't you maintain your, no?
They're basically asking if we have an effective survey to measure this.
Yes.
Okay. And then the second piece, which I think is more of the content that you've also talked through, is not California dashboard specific, but more for our own internal purposes and our LCAP to understand whether or not we're actually making progress on the underlying pieces. Is that a fair way to understand it?
So so far, among other state priority, as a district, we only have priority six is what we also focus on our LCAP. We don't have any other state priority as a focus on our LCAP. We can do that if the district wants. I've seen district with like 10 different LCAP goals, which they also cover all the state priorities. But as a district, we only measure and focus on priority six of the state indicator on our LCAP.
And when you say priority six, you, you mean school climate?
School climate, yes.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm not suggesting we make changes. I'm just trying to understand the different information that we're seeing. Then maybe this is saved for the LCAP portion of the discussion, but I'm, I'm trying to understand the, I think in metric 3.9 of our LCAP, we have, what, what I assumed was actually the implementation of academic standards piece, or it says local indicator, and then it says priority two score to beginning development is the baseline. Is that, is that referring to, is that not referring to the state priority number two?
I'm not sure what's on the, that's part was.
Yeah, he, it's on the LCAP. It's priority number two, beginning and developing. What we had last year and this year, we have initial implementation. So it is the priority two of the score of the three where we're at.
Okay, okay, okay. That's helpful to understand. So two pieces, California dashboard, met or not met because processes. And then separate question, again, just discussion of like, okay, thank you for showing us kind of where we are in each of these pieces. I think that's helpful. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that you're kind of getting at is like, hey, it's great to make this standards, but of course, we want to also use this as a, you know, an opportunity to, for reflection on the underlying data. And I, as you're pointing out, I know that like the healthy survey, the, the climate survey gets reviewed and acted upon. A lot of this is folded into the LCAP. I'll notice, I noticed it again here, that's 25% of students experiencing cyberbullying seems really high to me. I know that maybe that's not high, outlying relative to other districts, but that's also called out in the LCAP as an area for focus. And so I think it's great that, you know, the district is continuing to use this data. You know, the dashboard's one thing, we're meeting the standard, sure, but the important part is the district's continuing to use the data to stay focused on how students and families are experiencing school. So I just want to say thanks, Jenny, on a, all, any staff that was working on administering the surveys and synthesizing the data. You know, it's clear that some thoughtful work went into meeting all five of the local indicators. Yeah, I don't know if anyone has anything to close out, otherwise. No, it's just a discussion, yeah.
Just a discussion.
Okay, perfect. We can move on to the next one.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, everyone.
8.2 is a second reading, and, and this is just a discussion again of the board policy and AR 5123, and this is on promotion, acceleration, and retention, and I believe it's Wendy.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again to the board policy committee that met to review the discussion items from the last board, board meeting, where we were looking at different type of language that might be stronger in the board policy, specifically around acceleration and retention. And so we took that feedback to the board policy committee again. And you'll note that in these attachments, you'll see the highlighted version where the language was changed and, and reworded to capture the conversation that we had together as a board. So and some regrouping of the information and then small editing down on the second page with bulleted items. But I did want to open up this discussion with this new language brought to the board for consideration as our, as our final draft. But once again, are able to capture any thoughts that the board might have about the changes and really what the messaging is about this board policy to the public.
All right, does anyone have comments, suggestions? Yeah.
No, I just want to say, I mean, I'm fine with the changes. I also want to say thank you to the committee for, you know, putting all the time and effort and updating the board policies, so. Thank you.
I'm on the committee, but I'll just also say thank you to Wendy for being very proactive in putting this together. And I, I think it does reflect the discussion that we had, which was pretty robust among the, the full board during the first reading. And I, I hope, I think it does capture kind of the essence of where we're trying to get to, which is just really communicating, yeah, we really want to make sure that all students are being served to the full potential. And that means adjusting as appropriate. So again, thank you, Wendy, for putting this together.
Yeah, thanks for putting the additional language into the policy, particularly around discouraging retention as well. And I know that's not something that, that happens regularly, you know, and we rarely see it happen. But again, you know, I think we spoke about it last time. It's important to have the process in place so that there's no question should it ever come up. And particularly around ways for people to be able to appeal any of that stuff and have it, so.
Yeah, thank you for that. And thank you to the board policy committee. We, we really focused on language, and we have an excellent wordsmith or two on our team. And so really kudos to everybody to really, to capture what it was, I think the intent was. And that's what's the great part about this discussion process is to, to be able to go back and include things we may not have thought of or a new nuance on how we look at it. So thank you again.
Great. We'll look forward to approving this in August. We meet again. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have a few items on here, and we're going to approve them in one motion. So can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve all the consent items.
Second.
All in favor. Aye, perfect. All right, let's go on to the action items. We're up to 10.1, and that's approval of the LCAP for the 2526 school year.
Yes, so today we are now approving the LCAP for tonight. For the rest of the year, 2526, I did make those changes that were on there and found some minor adjustments as well as we went through again, looking at it again. So we are requesting the board approve our LCAP for the 2526 school year.
And so just to clarify, nothing, no material changes between this one that we discussed. And of course, last week, we had this public hearing. You know, it's back here tonight for adoption. David Lee, trustee Lee and I. David Lee, trustee Lee and I, and Vice President Weekly, we're all here last week. He's not here tonight, but we had a big discussion. Cecilia, I know you weren't here. Do you have any comments or questions that you'd like to start with on the L cap?
I don't. I do obviously just want to say thank you. I, I know Redwood City has come a long way. We've been doing a lot of. Improving again, moving the needle slowly, like I've said before, but it's moving. And so I do appreciate all the staff and particularly our teachers and. Teachers say that are there helping our students on a daily basis. So I do appreciate everything that everyone's doing.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just add, thank you Anna and team for making the adjustments. I appreciate the patience. I, I have lots of questions and I'm still candidly getting up to speed on like all the different pieces and trying to make things digestible, obviously for myself. But hopefully for others who are reading it, because I'm sure there's a wide audience, but really appreciate that. And then I think I said it last time, but the, it's just really great to see the actual underlying progress as well, like the difference from baseline. There's, obviously there are many things we can always continue to push on, but like we saw, we saw some really material results in the right direction, which I, I just thought was great.
Yep, I'll echo thanks for the thoughtful rigorous work that went into, you know, the L cap. And acknowledge all the, not just the strategic thinking reflected in the plan, but the engagement with families and students and educators and the community members that shaped it. So, you know, I'll be proud, proud to approve this plan tonight. I don't know if you have any.
Just to thank Anna and the team and those who worked with her closely to get this L cap put together. I know by many years that this has had, it's an ordeal. It's something that is not. Be, to be done in this fashion, but how it got to be here, it has to do with state legislation, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah.
We could do things so much easier and with specific content and context. And still give more information and I think it's a lot more clear to not only ourselves and to the community. This is a big job and there isn't, I believe, a superintendent in this county that would like to do it differently. We all. Have our woes about it, believe me, but thank you Anna for all the hard work that you put in, the late nights. Because sometimes I'm leaving late and you're still here. Thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
All right, let's make a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the L cap for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
All in favor. Aye, great. We're on to ten point two, and that's approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget for our C S D.
Yeah, good evening. So as you mentioned, President Wells, last week we had public hearings both for the L cap and for the budget. Where we reviewed the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. Since the public hearing, there have been no material changes to revenue expenditure or fund balance projections across any of our district funds. Minor formatting adjustments were made to improve the readability and presentation of the document. The budget continues to include multi-year projections through twenty-seven, twenty-eight, reflecting our commitment to long-term fiscal planning. Your mind remains aligned with the goals and actions outlined in the district's twenty-five, twenty-six L cap, which was approved in the previous board item. The proposed budget includes planned transfers from Fund Twenty-five to help maintain fiscal solvency in twenty-five, twenty-six. It also identifies the need for fiscal stabilization measures in the two out years, twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. To address projected structural deficits. The district is in the process of developing a detailed plan and timeline for identifying and implementing these fiscal stabilization measures. This work will begin in late July and continue throughout the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. With that, staff recommends the board approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as presented.
Thanks Rick. Cecilia, I'm going to point to you again, just because we, David and I had a, got a chance to talk about this last week as well. So I don't know if you have any questions or comments.
No, actually I did meet with Rick this afternoon and he went over the information. I did tell him I appreciate obviously all the thorough explanation. And I also want to say thank you to your team for helping you out with putting the budget together. So other than that, I don't have any questions.
And then Rick, I forgot to just clarify, I didn't see any material changes between this week and last week. There were, there were no like material changes in the budget. Yeah, okay, right, right, okay. David, any questions or comments? Okay, well then, yeah, we had a discussion last week, so I just want to, you know, say thanks again for putting the budget together. You know, obviously, anyone that's looking at it is going to see those big fiscal stabilizations and the big transfer coming in now. And this is not an issue unique to Redwood City School District, but it is something that hits this district particularly hard. Since, you know, we're kind of like just basic aid. And so, you know, post-pandemic era, those funding has, you know, kind of ended, we're kind of back to. Costs succeeding revenue, kind of school district that, that happens bef, you know, we saw before the pandemic and the tens and probably even before that. And, you know, we're seeing, we mentioned this last week too, new requirements are always coming to districts. And particularly for ones like ours, we don't get funding to go along with it. So Universal TK, as awesome as that program is. Is, yeah, is not cheap and that, that definitely comes and affects the budget, so, you know. It's gonna, you know, for, I think, except for Cecilia, for the rest of us on the board, we've never really had to deal with that kind of environment. Me too, I came in when funding was going up. It was, it was outstanding. And so, you know, we'll just have to. Reorient ourselves and be ready for that kind of environment and make sure that we're just, you know, focused on students and making sure that we're doing the best decision that we possibly can. Anyone else have comments?
Just thank you so much, Rick, even though I saw that fiscal stabilization plan that needs to come before the board and others. And it's, there's a timeline already in place. It's a draft. Jorge and I are working on it again on Friday just to clean it up. I will get it out to board members, but I don't need it back until first week in August. Just give me your thoughts.
Yeah.
But it should be completed on Friday of how we're going to get there, the timeline put in place. The. Ability to garner support from our community, from our staff, from our teachers and our administrators. So it's, like I say, it's a draft right now, but it should be in perfect cement condition for you to view. And then get back to me that first week in August.
Yeah, that's great. And while there's no need to drag out the timeline, there's something nice about doing it compressed. We do have a little bit more time than we do, than we did last year. Yeah, so.
So, but thanks again, really appreciate it.
Okay, so this is an action item. Can I get a motion to approve the budget?
I move that we approve the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget.
Second.
All in favor. Aye, great. We're on to ten point three. This is Resolution Twenty-six. And this is the Education Protection Act for the next fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Evening again tonight. We are asking the board to approve Resolution Twenty-six for the Education Protection Account. The Education Protection Account, otherwise known as EPA, was established as part of Prop thirty in two thousand twelve and extended by Prop fifty-five. EPA funds represent a portion of state income tax revenues that are allocated to school districts, charter schools and county offices of education to support instructional programs. These funds must be used for classroom-related expenses and cannot be spent on administrative salaries or benefits. Each year, the governing board is required to approve a resolution identifying how EPA funds will be used. Tonight. Funds for Redwood City School District will be used to support salaries for classroom teachers. And our estimated EPA funding for twenty-five, twenty-six is one million, two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And with that, I'll hand it back to the board.
All right, does anyone have questions about how the EPA funding is going to be proposed to be spent next year? Nope, looks appropriate in accordance with the requirements of the constitution, so California constitution, so great. Can I get less comments, any other comments? No, okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ten point three.
All in favor. Aye, perfect. Ten point four is Resolution Twenty-seven. This is approval of education code and title five options for teaching assignments for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Wendy Kelly.
Thank you. Each year at this time of year and also in August, there will be a list presented to you. For consideration for approval in order to allow for teachers who already hold credentials. Or are in staff development type positions, our speech language. Teachers who need a waiver to do the work that they're doing by the regulations of the C T C. And so this is an annual item. It usually has to do with in classroom situations, master schedule changes. Or a new elective that pops up that might be outside the teacher's credential, but the state allows this process to unfold. So that the board can consider a fully credentialed teacher who may want to stretch themselves in another area. Or have some sort of competency in their background to justify teaching in elective class or what have you, or, or another type of class. And so this process unfolds each year. I do want to point out with the August nineteenth board meeting. That we will likely have, I don't have a crystal ball, but it might happen. Additional ed code waivers and title five options that might need to be brought to you. We did alert the county that the board meeting is after the first day of school, which is sometimes problematic. However, they gave us an approval to move forward with that. So I just want to point that out because I will be bringing very likely the same type of document to you on August nineteenth. After school has started and we are good to go in that regard from the county. So anyway, this list is. My staff did a great job really working with all the teachers, the principals with the master schedules to put this together in advance. But we will have some others coming to you in August. Any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, any, anyone have questions? Nope. Thanks to the H R department for putting this together. We do this, like you said, we do it every year. These teachers are qualified, you know, for the assignments. And they're willing to take on other roles, so I think I definitely appreciate it. I think the board appreciates that too. Can we get a motion to approve?
I move to, I bet we approve Resolution Twenty-seven.
All in favor. Aye. Okay, ten point five is the twenty-five, twenty-six consolidated application for federal funding programs.
Friends and the audience. Can you unmute her?
I think I'm on mute. This is Catherine Barrett.
Yeah, we can hear you, great.
Hi, good morning, good morning, good evening trustees and my colleagues. This is our annual consolidated application approval for funding. This is when we submit our application each year for our federal funding. In our different federal categories, you can see on the application. It's a very simple application that we submit each year to the C D E. And we are applying for Title One funds, which are the supplementary funds. So anything that's above and beyond the basic education for students. And Title Two, you can see is supporting effective instruction. And in our L cap, which you just approved, there's lots of language. And how we are using federal funds to support our teachers and staff, our administrators this coming year. In our English learners and for Title Three, again, a lot of professional development and a lot of support. Is that is one of our major focus, folk I for this year is professional development and the support of our English learners. And, and as, as part of Title Three, there is specific funding for immigrant students. And so you'll see that as, as well in our L cap, federal funds allocated to immigrant students. A lot of our newcomer students and support through instructional assistants and teachers. And then ultimately we have Title Four, which is the student and school support. And it's that really like more of an enrichment piece, so we look at how we're supporting our students through. Social emotional learning and or academic enrichment, so things like tutoring. And our D LAC had a large voice and in the development of our. Federal funding and one of the major areas that they wanted to see addressed for our English learners. It was to ensure that there was adequate tutoring. And so through our D LAC committees, really bringing forward the voice of our families and making sure that tutoring. Academic tutoring was part of the plan in our federal funds.
All right, thank you Catherine. Does anyone have questions or comments before approving the submission of the application? All right, can we get a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve ten point five.
All in favor. Okay, ten point six and ten point seven, we moved to consent and approved that earlier. So we are on to board and superintendent reports. I know I have nothing in the past, from the past week to report. I don't know if anyone else does. Okay, all right, David.
The one thing that I attended was the Samatay County Office of Education School Funding Task Force, which is on Monday. And this is relevant, I think, to our earlier budget discussion, mainly, you know, obviously there's limited things that we can do from the district perspective on the revenue side. So a lot of the focus is necessarily on cost, but. I appreciate that the county office is looking, as President Wells mentioned. This is an issue that is afflicting, you know, many other districts beyond us, and so it's helpful that they're trying to brainstorm ways or at least gather ideas from folks across the county. On potential legislation or other ways that we can basically seek additional funding for our county where we have a very high cost area. That, that said, is, it's a task force, it's brainstorming. We'll see what that actually comes out with, and I think the next meeting will be in, in the fall. To kind of recap what the county office's staff has been able to pull together. So we'll see how it goes, but you know, just want to mention we are, we, we are, there are many people trying to solve this equation from multiple different angles.
Yeah, and I, I wanted to attend that, but I couldn't make it on Monday, so I had declined it. But were, were they still focused on L C F F funded schools or did it?
It, I, I spoke up for the, for our district. I think there's, there were a few ideas that were bounced around. One of them, I think, was about. Focusing on the quote lowest, lowest funded districts within the county. And I, I brought up that I think Redwood City and Ravenswood, for example, are in a little bit of a different situation where if you look at the raw numbers, it's, yes, we might have more than some others. But we, I think we, I think it would be helpful to look beyond just the raw numbers, right? Because it's also based on needs and we have a higher needs population than other places. And so I think that's still something that the county office is going to be, hopefully they'll be considering as they develop their ideas. So we'll have to see. And then there were two other ideas that are being explored. One of them, that's more on a specifically with the districts that have gone back and forth between base, basic aid and, and L C F F. And just ensuring that, to the extent that there are property taxes that are being withheld and they're not given back, that they are given back, which makes sense. And then the third was about some workforce housing types of proposals, but I think they're going to evaluate them all and then we'll, we'll see what they come up with.
Cool, thanks for the update. Yeah, managing that back and forth between L C F F and basic aid looks like a nightmare to navigate, so. Do you have anything to report from the last week? Okay, nothing to report. Okay, so now we received some information about Samatay County Investment Fund. If there are no questions, we can move on. Correspondence. And proceed none. Reminder about the board self-evaluation. I don't know if you've completed it or not, but we received. Those of us that have not completed it yet received a reminder, so I'll just pass that along. Okay, future agenda items, others suggested items for the future agenda. Okay, board meetings calendar, please note that Evelyn's updated it to the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. And it's the one with the adjustments, or I guess we approved it, right?
It was approved, and then the only one that I added on was the August twelfth board retreat.
Yeah, so it's August twelfth, and then there's two changes at the beginning of the year that we moved to different days for variety things. Okay. We're up to adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn? In a second. All right, all in favor. Aye, all right, we are adjourned.